Good evening. Could I have everyone's attention? All rise, please. Welcome. I would like to call this inaugural meeting of council to order and ask that you remain standing for the singing of our national anthem, performed this evening by Giancarlo Feltrin.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Just ask that you remain standing. I would like to call upon Father Chris Kuleg. He'll lead us in prayer.
Let us pray. Almighty and eternal God, you have revealed your glory to all nations. God of power and might, wisdom and justice, through you authority is rightly administered, laws are enacted, and judgment is decreed. Assist with your spirit of counsel and fortitude, the mayor of Niagara Falls, that his administration may be conducted in righteousness and be eminently useful to your people over whom he presides. May he encourage due respect for virtue and religion. May he execute the laws with justice and mercy. May he seek to restrain crime, vice, and immorality. Let the light of your divine wisdom direct the deliberations of the city council and shine forth in all the proceedings and laws framed for our rule and government. May they seek to preserve peace, promote happiness, and continue to bring us the blessings of liberty and equality. We likewise commend to your unbounded mercy all citizens of the city of Niagara Falls, that we may be blessed in the knowledge and sanctified in the observance of your holy law. May we be preserved as community and in that peace which the world cannot give, and after enjoying the blessings of this life, be admitted to those which are eternal. We pray to you, who are Lord and God, forever and ever.
Thank you. Please be seated. It gives me great pleasure to welcome everyone here this evening. My name is Bill Matson. I'm the acting clerk for the city of Niagara Falls. And we just wanted to welcome everyone to the inaugural meeting of the council for this term, 2019 through to 2022. As everyone is aware, the council-elect that we have here this evening is as a result of our most recent municipal elections held this past October. The city's officially been in existence since 1904, so over the last 114 years, I thought it would be interesting to know how many councils have we actually had in those 114 years? I don't think this is a stat that we commonly hear about. Starting in 1904, councils were elected yearly. So every year, can you imagine having those election signs at every corner throughout the city on a yearly basis? In 1963, of course, the old Stanford Township amalgamated with the city of Niagara Falls, and it wasn't until 1964 that we started electing council on a two-year term. This went on until 1982, and that's when council started with a three-year term. And then it wasn't until 2006 that citizens started voting for their council for four-year terms. This brings us to the present day where we have now before us our 80th edition of Niagara Falls City Council. So without further ado, I'd like to call upon his worship, Justice of the Peace, Bruce Phillips, and he'll be performing the declaration of office. And I just want to announce as well, while that's taking place, each member will come to the podium, and feel free, family and friends, if you'd like to step forward and take a photo, by all means.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell, come forward, please. Would you like to swear or affirm the oath of office?
Thank you.
Affirm or swear?
I affirm and swear.
Would you like the Bible?
Certainly.
Do you have the Bible in your right hand? I'll hold it. Would you please read your oath of office?
Didn't bring my glasses. I, Wayne Campbell, having been elected or appointed to the office of councillor in the municipality of Niagara Falls, do solemnly swear, promise, and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II, and I make the solemn promise that, and declaration, consequentially believing it to be true, and knowing that if this is of the same force and effect as made under oath.
Thank you. And a signature, please. Just hang on a minute. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Chris Dobroski. Would you like to swear or affirm?
I affirm and swear.
Swear with the Bible, right hand. And please read your declaration of office.
I, Chris Dobroski, have been elected or appointed to the office of councillors of the municipality of Niagara Falls, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. I would disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II, and I make the solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Thank you. And a signature, please. Congratulations. Carolyn Iannone. Would you like to affirm or swear?
Pardon me?
Do you want to swear or do you want to take a firm?
You just said "me." I'll just do this one. I, Carolyn Iannone, having been elected or appointed to the office of councillor in the municipality of Niagara Falls, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II, and I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
I think it was her first time. Vince Carrio. Wish you a firm or take your Bible?
Bible, great.
Take that and put a right hand on it and read your oath of office, please.
I, Vince Carrio, having been elected or appointed to the office of councillor in the municipality of Niagara Falls, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truthfully, truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II, and I make this solemn promise and declaration consciously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Laurie Lacoco. Would you please read your oath of office?
I, Laurie Lacoco, have been elected or appointed to the office of councillor in the municipality of Niagara Falls, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II, and I make this solemn promise and declaration consciously believing it to be true and knowing it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Dr. Peter Angelo.
I, Victor Peter Angelo, having been elected or appointed to the office of councillor in the municipality of Niagara Falls, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II, and I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Mike Strange.
I, Mike Strange, having been elected or appointed to the office of councillor in the municipality of Niagara Falls, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise the office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II. I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Wayne Thompson. Would you please read the oath of office?
I, Wayne Thompson, having been elected or appointed to the office of councillor in the municipality of Niagara Falls, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II, and I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
His worship, James Diodati.
I, James Diodati, having been elected or appointed to the office of mayor in the municipality of Niagara Falls, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II, and I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Ladies and gentlemen, one more time, let's hear it for the 2019-2022 council. And beginning his third term as mayor of the city of Niagara Falls, I'd just like to call upon James Diodati for his inaugural address.
Thanks, Mom. That was great. All right, so are we ready? It's kind of hard to believe, and I appreciate everybody being here today. You know, I was at the region getting inaugurated on Thursday, and I said to them, everyone was saying who they had here with them, and I said, "I don't have anybody," because I was unsure I wasn't going to be here myself. But today, I'm glad that I've got a lot of people here. So starting off with some thank yous. I'd like to first start off by thanking his worship, Bruce Phillips, Justice of the Peace, for presiding today. And he had a tough job. He read it each time at the region for all 30 councillors. And if you think saying "pecuniary" is an easy word, it's very difficult. And the other word is "conscientiously." And I must have heard 20 versions of it the other day. I'd also like to, if we could acknowledge Giancarlo Feltrin, the singer of the national anthem, for doing such a great job. Also like to thank Father Chris Kuleg for his prayers today and his blessings. Chris. Also, we had our Niagara Falls concert band who did a great job of entertaining us today. Thank you. August, I was finally diagnosed with Hodgkin's lymphoma. I was going through all sorts of crazy symptoms, not knowing what it was. Anyway, it was one of the most, and it has been, one of the most difficult journeys of my life. I came from a place before my illness of thinking I was okay. You know, I felt good physically, mentally, I ate well, I exercised, I was fit, I loved my job of serving the people of Niagara Falls, and I had a lot of energy left over for my family and for the people that needed me. So when I was blindsided by this challenge, and I really was not expecting it, this diagnosis came, I had to dig in. So I tried to really focus on the treatment and the healing rather than the sickness. And I tried to put negative thoughts aside. I only made room for positive thinking and a path to true wellness. So the beginning is a fresh start. The second theme is a new perspective. So this experience has helped me provide a new perspective on problems versus challenges. You know, sometimes we talk about our first world problems, you know, because somebody used up the last of the milk, God forbid, you know, and all these major problems that we get. But really, there's a big difference between problems and challenges. And I believe in the power of positive thinking and having a positive attitude which leads to a positive outcome. And I intend to maintain that approach. Even while undergoing cancer treatment and with the help of a great team and great family by my side, it was further reinforced. As I was forced to step back, all these great people stepped forward. And I know that we're going to work together as a council and as a team for all of you. Let me just jump to the page here, sorry. And I believe part of the reason I was elected was because I tried to stay above the negative banter, and I tried to focus on where we're going. You know those people when they're driving down the highway and they look, they rub their neck and see the accident, then they get into an accident? You've got to focus on where you're going. So clearly, that's what the people of Niagara Falls want, and that's what you deserve. And I intend to keep that leadership style intact, and I know that we've got the right team to do it. Our new city council, our city staff, along with our CAO, are all here, and our goal is to row the boat in synchronicity. And we're not going to stop there. We're going to uphold this mindset at city hall, city facilities, parks, playgrounds, trails, throughout all of our staff, and also on social media. Because there's a lot of people that want to drag us into negativity, we need to focus on being positive, no matter what the situation is. And we want to make sure that all these places of positivity, where we have a chance of catching people, doing things right, and focus on the good. It's okay to disagree. It's not okay to disrespect. And I'd like to read for you something that at one time when we were still allowed to do a prayer at city council, I liked, I used to choose doing the final analysis. The final analysis was written by a 19-year-old boy from Hawaii named Kent Keith, who ended up getting his doctorate. And I understand that Mother Teresa's home for children in Calcutta, it's widely been attributed to her, but it was actually written by Kent Keith. And I'm happy to say, I actually made it out one day to her place. And I know Father Paul McNeil as well spent a number of time working underneath of Mother Teresa's tutelage. So I'd like to read that for you if I could at this time, and it's one of the ways I try to steer my life, and I encourage my kids who are here in the front as well to do the same. People are often unreasonable, illogical, and self-centered. Forgive them anyway. If you're kind, people may accuse you of selfish ulterior motives. Be kind anyway. If you're successful, you'll win some false friends and some true enemies. Succeed anyway. If you're honest and frank, people may cheat you. Be honest and frank anyway. What you spend years building, someone could destroy overnight. Build anyway. If you feel, if you find serenity and happiness, they may be jealous. Be happy anyway. The good you do today, people often forget tomorrow. Do good anyway. Give the world the best you have, and it may not be enough, but give the world the best you have anyway. You see, in the final analysis, it's between you and God, it was never between you and them anyway. And the last point, so the first point was a fresh start, the second point was a new perspective, and the last point I'd like to make is a strong mandate. The city council will be directing the agenda, and of course, we'll have our eyes focused on the key projects, the new hospital, the university, the go-train, the entertainment center, paying the debt down, keeping taxes affordable, headed below the rate of inflation, helping to make sure that tourism, tourism creates careers, not just seasonal employment, connecting the dots back to youth, because we want to retain and attract youth back to the city. We're already started, starting our planning, and we're setting our strategic priorities, and that will be the roadmap for the next four years. And this council will work as a team to implement that for all of you. So those words that you've been waiting to hear, in closing. I love having Father Chris here, he's got the best laugh, you know? You could have the worst joke, but he'll make you feel like you were funny. In closing, I certainly don't know all of the lessons of my cancer journey yet, but I did have a friend who went through cancer. Matter of fact, she, she wrote a book recently, and the irony is, I went to her book launch in the spring, and it wasn't soon thereafter that I was dealing with my own battle, and she wrote me a text, or sent me a text, and she said, you know, she said, as hard as this is, when it's over and you look back, you'll never wish that it didn't happen. And at first, I had a hard time with those words, but I know, I bet here, show hands, how many people in the room, your family has been touched by cancer in some way, just to show hands, how many people? Almost all the room. So she gave me those words, but what I do know is, we're all in this together, and no one gets through a challenge alone. It takes a team effort. Wellness, and that includes individual well-being, as well as the well-being of our community. Here in Niagara Falls is a place that's positive, optimistic, healthy, and vibrant. Sometimes, the sharpest contrast provides opportunity for the most inspired action. For example, what most people saw as a swamp in Florida, Walt Disney saw as a magical paradise. Depends on your perspective. I like to think I'm a half-full, a cup-half-full kind of guy. We've seen some challenges along the path, but no doubt, it'll make the things that come our way in Niagara Falls that much sweeter. I truly believe our best days are yet to come, we just need to let them help happen. Thank you very much, and God bless.
Ladies and gentlemen, that does conclude tonight's evening. We thank everyone for coming out, and we do invite everyone to stay. There will be some light refreshment provided. One more time, let's just hear it for our next-term council, 2019-2022.